We are on to item, wait, I don't have a quorum yet. Now we're down to one person. Can we at least get two more council members to come back? Has anyone seen Darcy? Darcy, are you in the building?
I thought this was a three-minute conference.
What? Mahesh. Oh, Lisa.
So, we can be faster. We can be faster. Okay.
You don't have to be. You can be. You don't have to be. Okay, so we have a quorum. We can start. This is item 18. Adoption of a mitigated negative declaration mitigation measures mitigation monitoring and retention program and adoption of the Cupertino Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. So can we have our staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have Gail Seeds, our Parks and Restoration and Improvement Manager, and Cindy Mendoza, who's the Parks and Recreation Director from MIG. And the two of them have done an amazing job leading this project all the way through. And they're going to give you a summary of where it's been since the last time council saw the project and the results from the commissions that have seen this already. Take it away.
Thank you so much. Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Paul, and council members, it's my honor to be here tonight to present to you the final draft of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. Tonight, we are asking you to consider the recommendation made by the Parks and Rec. Commission to adopt this master plan to guide city staff in making park and recreation enhancements that will improve community livability and the quality of life for all Cupertino residents. Tonight, we are also asking you to consider the Environmental Review Committee's recommendation to adopt the mitigated negative declaration to ensure that the city continues to protect natural resources while implementing this master plan. The master plan provides guiding direction for parks, recreation facilities, trails, programs, and events through the year 2040. And as you know, planners and city staff aren't necessarily given crystal balls to be able to predict every single project that will be implemented over the next 20 years. So what's important to understand is that this plan provides a framework with vision and goals and a strategy that's guided by community priorities to be able to identify the needs for the park and recreation system for the next 20 years. This point is really important. We are not asking you tonight to adopt specific projects. We are not asking you to look at individual projects. In fact, individual projects, when they move forward, will come back before you at that time for you to make decisions, for us to look at CEQA, and to ensure that those projects are the right move at the right time. So tonight, instead, we're asking you to adopt a framework that's guided by community priorities that the city can use to help determine what to include in annual work plans and capital improvement plans in the budgets that, again, go back before you before your approval. As you know, this is a community-driven plan. More than 2,000 residents responded and participated in the planning process, identifying the 12 outreach priorities that have been described to you previously and are noted in Chapter Two, as well as the new vision for Parks and Recreation and the mission for the department, which grew out of the community's insights and priorities with guidance from our advisory group. As noted in Chapter Three, the outreach themes also guided the development of seven goals and the supporting standards, objectives, and actions that are needed to achieve those goals. This is the framework that we reference when we talk about this being a framework to provide guiding action for system-wide projects. The master plan also identifies site enhancement opportunities for every existing park and trail corridor in the city, as well as opportunities related to potential new parks, facilities, services, and enhancements. These are presented in detail in Appendixes E and F with highlights in Chapter Four. The opportunities include a variety of things, but specifically, it includes opportunities to improve large and small neighborhood parks, such as Jollyman Park or Franco Park, as well as the city's beloved community parks, including Memorial Park and the Stevens Creek Corridor. It includes recommendations for special-use sites, such as the Mary Avenue Dog Park, and even the Civic Center Plaza and Library Field just outside. And it also includes opportunities associated with the nine school fields that are operated by the city through a joint use agreement with the school district. The master plan also includes highlights of major park and recreation opportunities and projects. We call these "major" because they require substantial investment of staff, of capital resources, and of operational resources. And as noted in our framework in the sustainability goal, we discuss the wise use of funds and resources, which means that as we move these major projects forward, we want to make sure that you're considering these opportunities in the full context of the best way to apply city resources in the future. These consider and address projects such as new parkland opportunities, new facilities, and the additional resources associated with trail opportunities that are noted here on this slide. The master plan in Chapter Four also discusses expanded services for seniors as well as teens. We describe these as expanded services rather than new facilities because we recognize that these services can be applied in facilities of other types, such as a performing fine arts facility, or a year-round aquatics facility, or recreation center. If you recall from our outreach themes that are identified in Chapter Two, two things that we consistently heard from the community are the need for a greater recreation variety, a variety of opportunities, experiences, and facilities in the park system, as well as more extraordinary play opportunities. So the master plan, in addition to other recreation elements, identifies opportunities to achieve this variety, recommending things such as an all-inclusive, universal play area that is of special interest to the Parks and Rec. Commission, as well as many members of the community, and things such as event space and other diverse features that support the community's health, wellness, and fitness. Also, following the outreach priorities and a key goal of this plan, which is conservation, the master plan identifies opportunities for vegetation enhancements. These include things such as developing pollinator paths, tree canopy for shade, open space for habitat, and environmental and ecological benefits, and even opportunities to connect people to nature. So with that information, how should the city move forward? How should you proceed? Chapter Five provides that guidance by identifying the actions that will be carried forward in the short term. These include things such as pilot projects to be able to increase the variety of recreation opportunities. It also includes guidance in the short term for major projects, emphasizing that, again, in the wise use of resources, to consider things such as partnerships first, and looking specifically at needs for new parks in unserved and underserved areas, especially in north and east Cupertino, as well as trails in conjunction with additional trails planning that has been done through the bike and pedestrian transportation plans. Specifically, Chapter Five provides some guidance, along with Appendixes G and H, to fund and prioritize projects to include in the future CIP, as well as the city's budget. The tools are important because, again, what we want to emphasize is that this is a framework, and there will be projects that emerge over the next 20 years that are not currently anticipated. So the reason this plan includes these tools is to be able to address these projects as they emerge, evaluate them against the master plan goals and standards, so that the city can continue to advance projects that are aligned with this master plan. As you know, to get to this point, the plan has gone through a substantial review and adoption process that Gail Seeds is going to describe to you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Paul, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present the October 2019 draft master plan to you. You will recall that back in January, we issued our first draft master plan for community-wide input. A number of commissions weighed in on the master plan. There was a youth and teen forum workshop, and the master plan came to the City Council on February 5th, where it was an overall presentation on April 16th, where there was a focus on Chapter Three on goals, objectives, and actions, and on May 21st, where there was a focus on Chapters Four and Five. We took the input we received, the guidance we received, and updated and refined the master plan into a new draft. That draft was issued in the third week of October, and is part of your package tonight, the updated draft with the updated appendixes. It was publicized and provided at a number of locations and venues. The plan was presented to the Planning Commission, a courtesy presentation, on December 2nd of 2019, and presented to our Parks and Recreation Commission, who is the advisory body for this master plan, on December 5th. And on December 5th, the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended adoption of the master plan to you as the City Council. Environmental clearance process proceeded concurrently with the updated draft master plan. An initial study was prepared, which evaluated the potential impacts of adoption of this plan. It is a programmatic-level evaluation, looking at the plan as a framework. And the conclusion was that with incorporation of mitigation measures, there is no evidence that the master plan will have a significant effect on the environment. The three mitigation measures are in the categories of aesthetics for light and glare, for protection of biological resources, and protection of potential cultural resources. With those mitigations in place, this project is recommended for a mitigated negative declaration. A 30-day environmental review period ensued. The documents were posted with the county clerk and the state clearinghouse. They were publicized and noticed in a number of ways. The 30-day comment period concluded on November 22nd, 2019, and we did not receive any comments on the environmental documents or the environmental conclusions during that time from the public nor from the state clearinghouse. The Environmental Review Committee considered the documents and the feedback from the state clearinghouse on December 5th, 2019, and the Environmental Review Committee requested some text revisions that are considered minor. Those text revisions are attached to your package as Attachment G. Those revisions did not require re-airing of the environmental clearance documents. And with inclusion of the recommended edits, the Environmental Review Committee found that the initial study is appropriate for this project and recommended adoption of the initial study mitigated negative declaration. Now, back to the floor.
Sensitive microphone. So obviously, we've expedited this presentation tonight. You've had a long night.
It should be.
It is on, yes. Is that clear enough? But we do want to pause here just a moment to make one critical point, and that is, the community members have weighed in through advisory committees and a variety of forums through this planning process to ensure that this is the right plan for this committee, for this community. And the strength of this plan really relies on the strength and passion of the community members that stand behind it. And I think that's a critical point, because we're not creating a plan for plan's sake. We're creating a plan for implementation to guide you into the future. And I have to say, I have the opportunity to work with many cities across the country on similar types of planning efforts, and from day one, I've been really impressed with not only city staff, but our advisory committee members, including the community members who showed up for several meetings to help us see this plan through, our Parks and Recreation Commissioners, and even you as City Council members, who obviously have invested considerable time, energy, and passion and interest into this master planning process. When MIG was brought on board early in the planning process, we had a chance to sit down with many of you council members and ask you specifically for your directions, your hopes around this park and recreation system plan, and what you wanted the city to achieve, how they can enhance parks and recreation. And many of you shared from the heart the things that were your priorities, the commitments that you wanted to see made on behalf of this community going forward. So I know that you all are invested in this park and recreation system master plan. I really have tried to honor those commitments that you all have brought to the table, as well as the commitments and the interest and investment of all of the community members across the board. I think that it's important to recognize that we honor those, and I can think of no better way to honor the community commitments than to take the position tonight that we are ready to move this plan forward. We are ready to enhance the park and recreation system on the behalf of the community, and reflecting the involvement that you all have made and the good decisions that have been made to get us to where we are today. With that in mind, we do want to see this plan adopted to move forward and create the park and recreation system of the future, these next steps for the city of Cupertino. And in particular, tonight, we would like you to determine if you feel the city is ready to adopt the plan and move forward. If yes, we are going to recommend that you adopt not only a resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the Cupertino Parks and Recreation System Master Plan, but also to adopt a resolution to adopt the Cupertino Parks and Recreation System Master Plan itself. One point of clarity, that if you feel further changes are desired to this plan, we ask that you note those to us tonight, so that we can have the city attorney and our CEQA expert weigh in to see if that means we need to go back and do additional CEQA review, or whether the changes are such that we can simply make those modifications to the plan as per your adoption and be able to move forward. So thank you so much. But before I conclude this presentation, we would like to invite Chair Nisha Tombe to come up. She's the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and she would like to make a few remarks.
Excellent. I just wanted to begin, first off, by saying a big thank you to city staff and also our consultants for the amazing work that they've done, and also to the City Council for the input that we've had from you over the past couple of years and also in previous years, as well as the thanks to the commission. But mostly, wanted to say a big thank you to all of the community members who came forward at the many events participated, and the many surveys, and the advisory boards, and all of the different intercept points that we've had throughout the course of these past few years. Those voices are incorporated into this master plan, and we definitely want the City Council to vote in favor of approving this. I'm here not as an individual, but on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission. There have been several iterations of the commission that have been working on this. But the plan, as it has been sent to you, is by, up until this past round, the newest Parks and Rec. Commission has unanimously voted to approve this, to send to you all. So this is coming from the new set of Parks and Recreation Commissioners. A couple of things I did want to make sure that I highlighted. This is an amazing arsenal for us to use as we plan what we do with parks and recreations over the next 20 years, but this is not the implementation plan, and I wanted to make sure that that was explicitly clear, both to City Council as well as members of the community. We have, through extensive research, found that there are specific areas that the city residents are very interested in, and those have been included in this plan, but that is what this is. It is a plan, not the implementation. So I do want to make sure that the City Council is aware that you are not approving the build of specific buildings, and you are not looking to say, yes, we're going to do every single thing in this plan. What we are looking at is saying that based off of the voices in the community, these are potential things that we could be doing. The second thing that I wanted to make sure that I highlighted is that the commission, as well as the community, has been really committed to the seven principles that were outlined in the beginning. Not, it was not ranked in any specific order, but we did want to make sure that conservation, connectivity, as well as diversity, both in terms of the kinds of activities and spaces that we created throughout the community, would be built in the next 20 years, but also making sure that different parts and different areas of Cupertino were effectively served. So not just the west side, but the east side, not just teens, but also our seniors. We try to, in this plan, incorporate the gamut of what diversity can actually mean. So with that, I know you guys have had a long night, so I am here if you have additional questions in terms of what the commission might have been thinking. But again, thank you all so much for your time, and a big thank you to all of the community members who came forward and participated in the making of this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on to public comment now. We have Mahesh, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Alicia Shober, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Mahesh.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. We are really excited. My name is Mahesh Pekal. I'm from the Cupertino Bubneshure sister city, and we are really excited to see the healing garden in the master plan. And I think this is a really good initiative, which was actually even started from Bubneshure, the sister city. So we are really looking forward to starting the planning for implementation on that. I don't know, it just came, occurred to me now, and I was wondering if it is possible to somehow get a letter of intent from the city that we are intending to do that, because if I can get the letter of intent, I'll take it to Bubneshure, and we'll start planning from that side. To build this healing garden, there are 200 medicinal plants out there. We need to start identifying which plants can grow in California among, from the 200, so we need to do some planning on that. And not only that, also getting some stone statues from Bubneshure. So there's some kind of groundwork that we also have to do. So if there is a non-committal, but some kind of a letter of intent saying that, hey, this is the park, that is where we will be building this medicinal garden, the healing garden, so that would be great. That's all I was wondering, if that's possible. Okay? Thank you again. I really, I know it's been a long night. Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't think we have a location yet for the healing garden. I mean, the plan is talking about a possible healing garden.
And that's not what's agendized tonight, sir.
Right. So it's premature to try to send a letter for that.
Sure.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to point that out. So on this page, 107, there are a list of potential recreational elements. Every one is a potential, but somehow, the healing garden has the wording, a possible healing garden. Is that less possible than other elements?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, let's finish the public comment first.
How would you say it? I think it's great to be reminded, so thank you.
Okay.
So can I clarify? Can you answer? So the, sorry. So the funding for the healing garden, so is there a funding, or what kind of funding or features that will be provided?
We have...
That's part of the element.
Right. And it'll come back, and we'll discuss that.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know from him, what kind of things are they offering?
Right now, we have to think through that. I mean, in the sense, we're doing some fundraising, and those efforts will be started, but we have not yet looked at. For example, the plants and the things that we're getting from Bubneshure, they will be sponsored by the state. But about Cupertino, we have thoughts, but not really concrete plans on that yet.
Okay. Yeah, we really need to finish this. Jennifer, followed by Alicia, followed by Jean Bedord. Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning of City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I've followed this item for, I think it's been more than a year now. I have a lot of feelings that have changed recently because of the problems at the state level. As I said before, at a meeting you all were at, I have completely changed my vision of what's happening to our neighborhood, our city, and our state. We're going into a super-socialist, communistic level. I'm going to say right now that we have said on the east side more than one time that we need parkland. It has become apparent that the state does not care, and now, we're going to have double to triple numbers of people in ADU stuffed in backyards and tenements all over the east side. We have 5,000 square foot lots. So nobody's bought us parkland. We don't have the magic ratio now. We have one half-acre park, and there have been attempts to grab our other cabana club, and we'll talk about that next, in the next item. But I do not want anything changed at Memorial Park. I don't want buildings built there. That is a park. It is supposed to be park. It's supposed to be open space. Let's don't put every possible building, swimming pool, music hall in the middle of Memorial Park. That land was purchased to be a park. It has to stay a park in perpetuity. I am a big proponent of parks on the ground and Cupertino owning all their own parkland. I have to live the drama that is, was, and will be Valco for the rest of my life in Cupertino. We are staying here. We are not moving to Oregon. We are not selling our house. I will be a little old lady, and I will get to see the drama of SB 35 playing out all over the middle of Valco. I will live it the rest of my life. Therefore, I'm not, I am not thinking that we'll get any parkland out of Valco. It's going to be a big drama for the next 50 years. And I think that we need to back up and take a lot of our city funds and start purchasing parkland. That magic ratio is not working for everyone. And yes, I am changed. I am forever changed because of the gross abuse of our Sacramento senators of the people in their state. I didn't vote for these fools, and I will never vote for them again. But I want parkland. Nothing at Memorial Park. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Alicia Shober, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Alicia.
Hello. Good evening, council members. I am Alicia Shober, a Cupertino resident of nearly 30 years. During the May 2016 graduation ceremony for Leadership 95014, I, along with my teammates, presented to Cupertino City Council, Commissioners, city staff, and fellow citizens, a proposal to bring an all-inclusive playground to the city of Cupertino. I helped to foster relationships between the city and local nonprofits who were leading the way in developing all-inclusive playgrounds for their cities. I supported the effort by the County Board of Supervisors to earmark funds for the cities to offset the cost... to offset the cost of building all-inclusive playgrounds. Today, I come before you to encourage the City Council to adopt Resolution Number 20-025, adopting the Cupertino Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. Once adopted, to approve the creation of an all-inclusive playground that is part of the master plan. Cupertino sits in the heart of the Silicon Valley, capital, innovation capital of the world. By adopting the park master plan and the development of an all-inclusive playground, Cupertino commits to 21st century recreational services for its citizens. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Last card I have is Jean Bedord. Welcome.
And good evening, City Council. It's getting late. This council should stop wasting so much time. You just spent over an hour and a half arguing over state mandated ADU laws. This should have taken no more than 30 minutes. Now, you are being asked to approve the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This has been an excruciating process. I think it's been about five years. I've been to multiple community outreach meetings. I have taken multiple surveys. It has been reviewed by multiple commissions. So please, just thank the staff for a job well done and approve it. There were others tonight who wished to express the same opinion. Please, please, let's just get this approved. Instead, they went home because they got tired of waiting. So start, approve, so get it approved, so Parks and Rec can actually start on implementation. Please stop wasting the public's time.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to council. Before we adopt this, are there any comment?
I move adoption of this plan. How many years has it been?
It seems like 100.
Four, five, it feels like 10. And I've only been on the council eight plus. You know, I actually, there's work that needs to be done in the city, and we kept saying, okay, well, let's get the master plan done first, right? And then we can see the whole context for the decisions we're making. So I think a lot of the, you know, I've talked about some of the improvements in previous meetings, and I won't go and dig down in the details, but I do think clearing this bar means that we can now move forward. And we just have to recognize that not all the projects in this plan are ever going to get done, right?
Right.
And the council's going to see every one of them and debate every one of them, I'm sure, long after I'm gone, and probably long after some of the, all of you are gone, right? We'll have some of those things, because there's a lot of capital needed and it'll just, it takes time. So we, this does not obviate the need for us on a continuing basis to set priorities, set the CIP. We have a special meeting dedicated to that. We can do that, but I think what this does is it gives us an opportunity to finally say the framework is set and now we can get on with specific projects as the council prioritizes them and funding is available.
Okay.
So I'll move this.
All right, I'll second. Vote with your lights. Wait, wait, any discussion?
I have an important amendment I'd like to make. On page 91, for the school partnerships, I think we have had public comments multiple times regarding the joint agreement with CUSD missing Lawson and Sedgwick. These two schools are not included. So I would like this to be a short-term goal, to expand the joint agreement to include these two schools. And another thing is, under the short and longer term, there are plans to improve the partnership recreational elements for, for example, Garden Gate Elementary, another bullet item for Hyde and Sedgwick, another bullet for Kennedy, another bullet for Regdawn, another bullet for Stevens Creek, but there is not even one bullet for Lawson. So I would like, and Lawson, in fact, is the one where we have included a teen center there. So I think that's missing. We need a short, so two amendments on this page. First is short-term for including those two schools in joint agreement, and second is one extra bullet for the recreational elements for opportunities for Lawson area.
So, I mean, we have not excluded those two schools. As far as I know, it's CUSD that did not want to be, want them to be a part of the joint use agreement. Is that accurate? I mean, we cannot force CUSD to include them. I don't know the reason they don't want to, but they don't want to.
That's what I understood when I first came in, that they, it's the school's call.
I don't think, as written, this doesn't preclude us from striking a new agreement. I mean, generally, right, what we're doing is trying to be supportive of these, of these joint uses where we can, so.
Right.
I think the agreement can evolve.
Yeah, we would like Sedgwick and Lawson, and we've tried, but they just...
Go through yet another markup cycle.
But I don't think there has been an effort to actually have sit down with them to talk about this, right? So as a short-term goal, let's do that.
If I can suggest, rather than worry about it with the master plan, we talk about it as part of the work program for the upcoming year, and look at it that way, because it would be one of the things that staff would be looking at. Improving the relationships between the city and the school district to look for more partnerships.
So wouldn't that be a short-term goal? So why not we add it here?
We don't have, the master plan really deals with city-owned facilities or, or facilities where there's a joint use agreement already in place. We don't have that with those two schools.
You have Sedgwick here.
Right. My suggestion...
So why not Lawson?
We can do that if council wishes.
And this is just a goal, right? We may or may not get it, but Lawson...
There is a short-term action to, on page 108, in the lower right-hand corner, new neighborhood parks. It specifies explorer joint use agreements with schools and/or other partners to improve access to existing facilities, especially in underserved areas. The schools you mentioned would qualify for those underserved areas.
But not specifically about Lawson and Sedgwick.
Correct, because my understanding is that is up to the school district, so we did not call them out by name.
Page 91 does include Sedgwick. So why is Lawson missing? And page 91, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 bullets for different areas. Three are on the west side, one on the east side, one in the middle.
I mean, the item on 91 is to explore, let me do a read, I'm sorry. So the item is to pursue partnerships with the school district at Hyde Middle and/or nearby Sedgwick Elementary. We can definitely add Lawson to that list. That is, the idea is to pursue the partnerships.
Yeah, so add a separate item. That's not, let's add a separate item, because that make it more balanced.
We will add, we can add Lawson to that list of items to pursue.
Does that affect CEQA?
No. No, I mean, if you have Lawson, you can add, yeah.
Okay, so that's one amendment to add Lawson to that bullet point.
And additional one is page 107, about the Healing Garden. Can we just remove the possible? Because it's odd, everything else is not possible, and this one is possible. I mean, everyone else doesn't have the word possible, but all these are possible goals, right?
That's true. Everything there is, nothing there is for sure, so.
Yeah.
Why is that one say possible?
Only one says possible. What does the...
That's fine, that's an easy fix.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's two.
And then, on the same page, short-term actions. We have a long list of short-term actions from page 107 to 108, including a ton of things, including cricket, cricket field, baseball, pickleball, community gardens, yes, but then, do we have short-term goals for pickleball and cricket field? Are these short-term goals? It seems we have a really long list of short-term goals.
So the short-term list is a seven-year planning horizon, roughly one-third of the full term of this plan. The intent in coordinating with staff previously is that, yes, pickleball being a, a major opportunity to provide a low-impact sport for both families as well as seniors is something that would move forward. The intent with cricket field is to begin to explore other opportunities immediately to meet this need through partnerships. That's one of those things that the city would like to keep their eyes open for as opportunities arise. It doesn't mean that the cricket field will necessarily move forward in the short term, but that the city is open to partnerships if something should emerge that's appropriate.
So short-term is about seven years.
Correct.
Long-term is 15 years. That's the duration of this plan, right?
Twenty-year plan.
Twenty-year plan. Okay, okay. So then, it sounds like Healing Garden should be on the short list also, because it seems there is an effort to really pursue on this. Should that also be on the short-term list?
Community garden is what, the type of garden that we actually heard a stronger public commitment to and interest in. We put that one on the short term, and then, again, because of this partnership and the opportunity potentially to raise funding for a Healing Garden, we noted it as a possibility, but it seemed more contingent, because it's more of a special needs type of garden, it is more contingent on funding become available through, you know, this potential partnership.
Isn't that the same as cricket field? I'm confused. Cricket field is also pending on funding, right? It's also a potential partnership.
Yeah. Cricket fields, like borrowing someone's field, existing field. It's not, I guess you'd have to put in a cricket pitch, but...
The difference in my mind is that most of the items that you see on this list, we heard through the broader public engagement, the Healing Garden emerged later in the planning process initiated not broadly by the community, but by a specific partner interested in moving this forward. We felt it was a very valuable addition to the plan. We have not seen the broad-based public support for that in the way that we did around, you know, dog parks, community gardens, and other opportunities, but we wanted it noted in this plan, recognizing the, again, possibility of it moving forward.
So it's brought up too late, so we haven't really gotten enough public feedback on this.
Okay. I would suggest that if we're going to get through the agenda, that we take the plan as it's intended and come up, come up to the 30,000-foot level. Is it a decent plan and to have council move to adopt it or not?
I'm done, just two amendments.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. So as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for seven years, I really appreciate the effort here. I think, you know, the public is probably well-informed, but it's probably well-served also as kind of a brief historical recap. This was initiated by the suggestion of one of our then-Parks and Recreation Commissioners, who pointed out in the aftermath of a contentious discussion as to whether to repurpose the Blackberry Farm Golf Course for particular, you know, purposes and with a lot of different programmatic elements, that a lot of these elements, given the amount of discussion within the community, might well be served as being placed in other areas of the community. And so that really was the genesis a number of years ago. It was no more than five years ago, because it was certainly at the time when I was still on council, it was probably early though in that period of time. And so I want to thank Cindy Mendoza of MIG, as well as Gail Seeds of our city staff, for, you know, working on this over the course of the years. Of course, MIG was not the first consultant that we ended up choosing, and so that accounted for actually probably a good year and a half of the process up to this point. I think that it has been really instructive to have these sessions in which we have a good amount of feedback from the community, but also from up on the dais. And I wanted to point out a couple of items here, and I'll do so briefly. Randy, thanks for, you know, all your work as interim Parks and Recreation Director, and also for, you know, your input on the items that Councilmember Chow brought up. I think that with respect to being the interim Parks and Recreation Director, even though it is a temporary position, it is still the position that is being held at the time that we're, you know, presumably adopting this. And for a certain amount of time, you know, at the initiation of the implementation of this plan, you will be the interim Parks and Recreation Director, Parks and Rec Director nonetheless. And so I would like to see some kind of acknowledgement of that. I saw that there was a transmittal letter at the beginning. I would support, you know, placing our interim Parks and Recreation Director as an identified person that is important to this moment in time when we are approving the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So that's my first request, and that's really the only amendment that I would like to request to the content. Furthermore, I'd like to thank, as part of this process, the representative from MIG and our city staff for taking our past comments, which I think have been extremely useful, because of course this is a process. You know, we're not an autocracy, you know, we're not, you know, one of those situations where whoever, whoever you want to name, can, you know, bang a gavel and say this is how it's going to be. And so, you know, one of the things that I've been very adamant about trying to represent from the public is to identify those areas of our city where park access is not as readily amenable. And so it is very difficult to think about these types of items from the dais. You know, how do you create a map, a heat map, so to speak, of accessibility? Although I did try. I would like to draw the public's attention to map D3, which I'll go ahead and put up on the overhead on the dais here. And I think that this is a really great example of how well our consultant did in terms of taking our feedback, and maybe not literally, you know, following every single I and cross T, but taking what our feedback was and indicating our intent. And so you'll see different colors. Essentially, if it is very deep purple, or orange, or yellow, it's essentially park-deficient. But what they have done is that they have taken all public acreage within a 10-minute walk and put it into various tranches. So if you have more acreage, then it is a deeper blue. If you have less acreage or no acreage, it's essentially purple. So this is an excellent heat map of the city. Now that we have our Parks and Recreation Chair, Commission Chair here, Nisha, thanks for making it out tonight. When I was on commission, near the end of my term there, we had started talking about park lets. And so if you notice, some of the more deeper purple areas of this, I'm not asking for any changes within the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but I think that that would actually be pretty useful to start re-initiating those conversations, because those darker purple areas of town, the orange, the yellow, a lot of the reasons why you don't have access to as many park facilities is that they tend to be more commercial spaces, or more spaces that at least are not as conducive to acquiring a space and building out a public park in the traditional sense. But of course, a park let, you can basically be partnering with businesses, you can be partnering with other entities that might be nearby and providing that type of space, if not, you know, as expansive as a public park. So I think, I think you are to be commended, MIG and Cindy, for taking that direction and running with it in a very effective... and running with it in a very effective manner. Finally, I'll just close by saying, in Chapter Five, we had had a discussion, and it has been something that has been crucial to our public sentiment and conversation in Cupertino over the past several years, as to how we prioritize projects. And so in one of our early conversations, this would have been several years ago, we talked about, well, how do you prioritize something major, like an aquatic center or a recreation center vis-à-vis a performing arts center, for instance? And I think that the solution that you came up with here in Chapter Five was really excellent. It is not a matter of kicking the can down the road or punting the ball. You have actually identified a number of factors, a number of questions that we can be asking to the public in the future as to how we should best prioritize and reach out and engage. And so this, in my opinion, is a true twenty-year prospectus of a master plan. And I thank you for the effort that you've put forward in the past several years. And I thank the public for coming forward, as well as everybody with their whole spectrum of opinions. But I think it's been very valuable of an exercise. So with that, I would like to ask that we vote, if there are no other comments.
I'll be brief, but so I'll start with, for all the Parks and Rec personnel, I mean, I really appreciate how much work you've done to provide the overall community with such a great collection of parks and recreation. I mean, movies in the park, all the programs you've brought to the community. To me, I mean, that's just really a very wonderful thing that you've done. The two items that I would toss out is that schools are of great concern to me in the fact that our CUSD is underfunded. And that by maintaining, if we do get the joint use agreement with Hyde, Sedgwick, and Lawson, and we do the maintenance for those fields in exchange for the community use of those fields. To me, I think that's a good help to the school system. So I would really encourage you to reach out to Dr. Baker and have that discussion. You may find that, wow, when you really look at it, that does make sense from his perspective. It relieves him of some areas that he would otherwise have to continue spending money on. And then the Healing Garden, I think, you know, as long as there is that community interest and to the extent of actually going out and getting donations and doing fundraisers and things, I would say that that then would hopefully, you know, make that one available. In order for people to do fundraising and put in time and effort, they have to know that it's going to actually be useful. And so letting them know that you would in fact prioritize it as long as they are able to come up with an amount of money that's needed for that Healing Garden and not leave it just as a less significant idea. But back to the first point, thank you. I think we have, you know, one of the best park systems around, so thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I have one more question. So, thank you, Darcy reminded me something I've asked in every meeting. But first, let me thank the staff. Thank you for your patience, that we have gone through this a lot. I think it has improved a lot every time. And, but then the question I ask every time is, do we have a map that can show us what's the population density versus the amount of parkland that's available? The map Darcy showed earlier shows how whether a park is accessible within 10 miles. But is it accessible by one person, 100 persons, or 10,000 people? We don't know. Just like the conversation earlier, do we have one toilet for one person or one toilet for 100 people? Do we have any map to show population density? Because the reason this is important is because our general plan and the Quincy Act requires a standard of three acres of parkland per 1,000 people. So we need some map to show at least density versus parkland available.
And we do have, we are far more than three acres per 1,000 people. That we do have over 220 acres of parkland for the 64,000. And that includes the city-owned spaces, as well as those that have long-term agreements through the school districts. It does not include the parks, the parks that are owned by Santa Clara County. If we included those that are very accessible to our public, we would be well over five acres per 1,000 residents.
I don't mean for the entire city.
I do understand.
I mean a map, so we can show differentiate between areas.
Right, no, I do understand that. And so the map that we were able to pull up today, that you requested this morning, we were able to pull up some data on it. The idea is we would not, there's no requirement that says for every 1,000 individuals, we have three acres. First of all, we wouldn't know how to draw where the lines should begin and end with 1,000 individuals. We also would not want to have 64 small parks within Cupertino. If we kept with 64 small parks, and small parks being three acres, roughly the size of Library Field, a little bit smaller than Three Oaks Park, we wouldn't be able to have our larger activities. We wouldn't be able to have the special events, the concerts, the movie nights, all of those things. So all cities look at that, from the National Park and Recreation Association to the California Park and Recreation Society. It's looked at as a whole, rather than as individual thousand people. But what we were able to do on this map is to look at the segments of it and to come up with some approximation. As you see, there are, in the red, it is areas where it's more underserved. In the far east here, in the northern-central part of the community, over by the Mary Avenue Dog Park area. And then in the top-left-hand corner are the areas that are the most underserved in terms of parkland. The numbers on here are true approximations. We cannot tell, we do not have a map that says how many people are in a specific area. What we do have is, in each of these areas, where if you count how many households, we approximate, and I think the number was 2.96 people per household, was the estimate we used. And then we went back and for each of those parks that are in those areas, this is the amount of persons per park acre. So we took the size of the park and then did the math to determine the raw number that you see there. So it's, in the circle is how many acres the park is, and then how many acres, how many people are served in that area. So it's a true approximation. Example, Three Oaks, 3.1 acres for 2,800 people. This is the closest we've been able to come up to get the information that you're looking for. But in total, my recommendation to you is to move forward and not look at specific 1,000 individuals 64 times within the community, but to look at the community as a whole.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much to finally have this map. I think that idea has been kicked around for six months.
Yeah, well done.
I'm sorry, it's not better, but it is the best we've been able to come up with.
That's great.
I'd like to make a request that the original motion be amended to include Councilmember Chow's two amendments, as well as my amendment. And then I would like to...
It was two.
Add Lawson, right? Delete possible from the hanging thing. And what's yours?
Mine was to add interim director Randy Schwartz as the interim director to the Parks and Rec Master Plan, whether it be in the transmittal letter or wherever staff in the consulting...
There's an acknowledgement pledge that we can add it to.
Okay, so I accept those three and would like to call the question.
Wait, what are we going to do about that map?
Well, okay, so that's, it's in draft format, it's undeveloped. I view it as the same status as my suggestion that the Parks and Recreation Commission go and look at parklets to help alleviate some of the inequities with regard to park access in the city. So because it is so late in the game, and thank you for, you know, generating that map so quickly, I think we can still provide some recommendations and direction going forward. I think it's a great start, that's a great map.
Okay, just to be clear, adding Lawson, we were going to add it to the bullet with Hyde and Sedgwick. We were not doing a separate bullet, from what I remember.
No, separate bullet, I think.
I think it's appropriate on this. I would accept it as one inside the bullet, just like the other.
Wait, there is a bullet for Riggnard.
Can I call the question, please? I would like a formal vote to call the question. This dialogue has gone on and on and on, and we never get anything done.
Sorry, there is a bullet for Riggnard.
There's no discussion after a call of the question. You require four people to vote on whether to end discussion.
My amendment is to put a separate bullet for Lawson. I'd like to amend the motion, so that we have a separate bullet for Lawson.
Councilmember Chow, if I may, just under the recently adopted Rosenberg's rules that you've approved, if someone calls the question, discussion has to immediately cease, and there's a vote on calling the question, which means should we end discussion and approve the motion on the table? And so it requires four people to vote on whether to end discussion and have it passed? And so the parliamentary procedure now is to, for the clerk to decide whether...
Can I...
And the mayor can also do a friendly request to see if there's more discussion that's required without doing the vote.
Wait, can I amend the motion?
No, the Rosenberg's rules, I'm sorry, this is first time we've done this, so calling the question.
Darcy's original description was my two amendments. My amendment is a separate bullet point.
You can do that if the council decides to have more discussion.
Wait, if we are including my two amendments, my amendment is a separate bullet point for Lawson.
Okay, then we're not including the two. Then I would, well, the question's been called, so I can't discuss it anymore, I'm sorry.
Well, we need a vote to see if...
Yes, well, let me just short-circuit this. I will entertain just very brief further discussion with regard to... Okay, look. So I don't think it's material, but if you...
It is totally immaterial.
If you want a different bullet point, okay, let's go ahead and make it a different bullet point, it's fine.
Fine, fine.
Why does that matter for you guys?
Well, because it's immaterial. You're just adding more complexity to the document for no reason.
Yeah, I mean, you've already reflected your point. No, we can, because we actually haven't called the question effectively, because I'm not providing that fourth vote.
Oh, right.
So, okay, so I would like to ask respectfully that we make it a separate bullet point as one of the amendments says, Councilmember Chow articulated in her understanding of her own amendment, which I think should probably, you know, prevail here. In addition to the other amendment, removing possible and adding interim director Randy Schwartz.
Fine.
So, all right. Councilmember Sinks, is that okay with your original motion?
No, it's not. I think we've trivialized this process in gory detail, I'm not...
We have trivialized it, but in the interest of getting this done, let's just do it. It's not a big deal.
If I can try and summarize...
We have a parliamentary procedure to follow, and we, you know, I mean, I understand we can talk about these trivial changes endlessly for a plan that has been reviewed by every commission, and now we're sitting up here and adding more and more and more and more detail that frankly, you know, should have been brought up much earlier. So I'm done with this item.
Okay.
I've made the motion I'm going to make.
So the next step is whether we vote on the amendment proposed by Councilmember Paul.
Exactly. Darcy proposed that motion, which includes my amendment. And Rod is trying to modify my amendment, right? My proposed...
Okay, so let's vote on this, since it's been called. Was there a second?
Well, no.
Second.
Paul's second.
Fine, authority.
I second, right?
Can somebody clarify the motion we are...
We're voting on the amendment to your motion, which is to make Councilmember Chow's two amendments, as well as my amendment. That's it. Right now, we're voting on the amendments to the motion.
I believe we need to vote on the negative deck before we vote on the full adoption of the master plan.
Isn't that part of the motion? Isn't the negative declaration part of the motion by Councilmember Sinks?
It's two separate resolutions.
So, yes, I would recommend that there be a motion to adopt the mitigating neg deck and then...
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 20-024, adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the Cupertino Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. Second, vote.
So there was a previous motion that was on the table.
Yes.
Pushed through that for the amendment?
No, we still need to vote on that.
Okay, so that motion carried with Sinks voting no?
Okay, now we're voting on the mitigated negative declaration.
Just that.
That motion carries unanimously.
So I'd like to move the amended motion with regard to resolution number 20-025.
Second, or third?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
And that's the plan, right? We just approved the plan? All right.
That should have taken five minutes. Okay, we are on to item 19, receipt of the January 20, 2020 Public Review Draft Report from Local Area Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO of Santa Clara County. LAFCO entitled Special Study Governance Options Rancha Rinconada Recreation and Park District, and provide direction to staff. So is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you is regarding Rancha Rinconada Recreation and Park Recreation District. This was established back in the 1950s and is the only special district within the Santa Clara Counties. It's almost completely within the city limits of Cupertino. Over the past decade, there have been a few instances when the district has struggled administratively. Examples of this would be allegations of mismanagement, difficulties finding the governing board's five seats, or filling the five seats, barely getting the budget passed on time. A few years ago, a few members of the district informed the LAFCO Board of their concerns. LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission for Santa Clara County. It is a state-mandated agency that oversees the boundaries of cities and special districts within the county. Upon receiving the concerns of the district members, LAFCO contracted a consultant to produce a report on the district, and the latest copy of that report is what's in your packet tonight. The report lists three options. The first option is the status quo that keeps the existing district intact with no oversight from the city. The second option is that the district be dissolved and absorbed by the city. The third, similar to, is similar to what I think you experienced years ago with the RDAs. The city council would become the district's governing body, leaving the district intact, but the council would become the governing body for that. At their April 5 meeting, LAFCO Board allowed for discussion on this topic and opened a public comment period that is going to be closing on March 11. To date, we have received the LAFCO's report, a letter from the district board advocating for option one, which is in your packets tonight, but we've not heard from the residents of the district. Staff tonight is recommending that the city council receive the report, refer the item to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then add this item to the commission and to staff's 2019-2020 work program. The Park and Rec Commission would then be able to review the report, survey the residents within the district, conduct a public meeting to receive the input. That information and the commission's recommendation would then be back before you, the city council, in April, along with any comments that the LAFCO has received during their public comment period. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this matter.
I think it's a great idea to poll the residents. I mean, this...
I mean, this was part of Rancho, I guess before it was part of Cupertino. And, you know, it's really up to what they want. I mean, you know, a lot of people think it would be a good idea if it was part of our parks and rec, but other people may have other ideas.
And the residents of the district are really the one body we have not heard from yet.
Correct.
Do I ask...
Any, oh, we have one public comment. Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I attended the LAFCO meeting, which was, what, two weeks ago? Went down to the county. I grew up in a county pocket. I am very, very, very familiar with LAFCO. My county pocket has annexed in the last several years to another city. I was brought up on LAFCO. I will say right now that I propose option one, status quo. The things that happened were orchestrated. The district is running well. It has always run well. I have been going to meetings there since 1990. We annexed out of the county. My great aunt was an original landowner there. I went there when I was a child. My father would go and help her with her home. There is nothing wrong with the district, with the board. It's well-run, we have three members now. Last summer, I attended every meeting, every day. There were people there that were dedicated to making sure that the Rancha Rinconada Swimming Pool District continued. I am committed to having it continue. There are $1 million in assets that belong to the special district. You cannot dissolve a special district without polling the residents. There is $1 million of our assets. That land is worth eight to 10 million dollars. We, I don't think the Park and Rec Commission have any business doing anything with the Rancha Rinconada Swim Special District. It's not theirs to do anything with. I pay property taxes to support that district. It has wide sphere of influence. My husband, who grew up in part of San Jose that is now Cupertino, actually learned to swim there in the 60s. It has been our cabana club, the center of our neighborhood. We had our meetings there when we sought to annex into Cupertino. It has been there since 1952 to 54. I know because my aunt's house was around the corner from this area. So I think at this point, it's well-run. Whatever issues were orchestrated, for whatever reason, I'm very, very embarrassed by some of that orchestration. But you have three people on the district right now. It's running very well. Always had had excellent accounting, and they are very, very well-trained and committed, as we are. So at this point, I think let's leave it as status quo. The other thing is too, I will make this statement, that if Cupertino takes the park, you cannot have it for... I think we need to solve the swimming pool problem at Blackberry Farm and not spread it across to the east side. And if you take our district, then you have to take everything out of it, and we get the two-acre park with nothing in it. It's our park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring it back to council.
Well, I can speak on this. So, you know, we have heard about concerns about the governance of this district from a variety of folks. I have no particular opinion about any of it. But I do think, given LAFCO's interest in reassessing what's appropriate, I think it would make sense for us to hear from the residents in the community and really listen very carefully. We've heard from one person, but, you know, there are, how many homes are in this district?
There are about 1,400 and about 4,000 residents.
So I would absolutely, as Stephen has said, support the idea that, under the leadership of our Parks and Rec Commission, that we listen to what folks in the community are interested in doing. They may find benefit in the city of Cupertino and our excellent Parks and Rec staff, integrate it into our program. It could be promoted better as part of our citywide efforts. Or they might say, hey, as Jennifer has just said, we like it just the way it is. Okay, we've had some governance squabbles, but, you know. So I think I would like to hear from those homeowners. Thank you.
Okay, so I think some member of the public said they are... Their main concern is whether this parcel will be considered parkland. If it were part of the city, would then that their side be... They won't, it will be counted as parkland, but it's not really a park. Then they will not get another park. That was the main concern. So would a pool be considered parkland in the calculation?
I've never heard anybody bring that up before, but yes, it would be considered parkland, just as... I mean, parks come in all different sizes. A skate park would be a park, basketball courts. So it doesn't have to be softscape, it can be hardscape as well. A swimming pool, Blackberry Farm swimming pool is considered as part of parkland. But it would not preclude other spaces in those areas from receiving a park. That would be a completely separate discussion that the Park and Rec Commission and the city council would be having at a later date.
I guess their concern is then they would be getting, on the number, on the surface, they will be getting a park in the calculation when they have exactly the same facility as before, which is the same amount of park and that swimming pool.
Yeah, I cannot see this precluding any other discussion over acquisition of parkland in that specific or in the general area. This would be, I think...
But it's a formative, this will be considered a park, right? In terms of...
This would be part of the city's park system, correct.
Okay. And you mentioned, actually, I know that there is, there was a report done by LAFCO many years ago that pointed out some of these problems that this district has been having. But this staff report didn't really refer to that report, but you kind of mentioned it. And this current report that we are looking at is ordered by the county. And the counties seems to have a recommendation to keep status quo. But I remember LAFCO's recommendation was to somehow change it, because there were financial transparency problems and some other issues. So could you, in the future, include that those past reports, so that the Parks and Rec Commission would have more background?
We will ask LAFCO if there are past reports, and if so, to make them available to us. That is something that the commission should consider. But LAFCO did not make them available to us at this point.
I think that's a public report.
I'm sure it is, but we did not receive it. So we can request it.
Yeah, I guess it's important to know what problems there have been. If we keep it in status quo, how we can fix it, so it doesn't reoccur. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing. Darcy, John?
So my question would be that, you know, it kind of seems like LAFCO really isn't in the business of oversight, and that's why I think this thing has kind of been the appearance of a stepchild to them. It's right next to San Jose. Is there a possibility that if we didn't take an action, that out of the blue, San Jose could try to annex it themselves?
All but two of the properties are within Cupertino's borders. Two of the homes are within San Jose. So it's not just the property itself, but I think it also, the members of the district are 99% Cupertino residents.
So San Jose couldn't try annexing it?
Unless they annexed the homes within the district, I wouldn't understand how they could do that. I think they would have to...
I don't think LAFCO would do such a thing, realistically.
So it does sound like there's three options that let the residents decide on. One, status quo. Two, provide the oversight for that by the city council here. Or three, absorb it into the Parks and Rec Department, which Parks and Rec, like I said earlier, wonderful. But if the residents prefer one or the others, I think they're the ones that need to make the decision. And I'm glad that there's the three choices. Because again, if it's been kind of a stepchild and a shortage of even getting board members, then is the oversight adequate? I mean, somehow, if the board needs help, if it needs help in getting the word out, setting the requirements to be a board member, making sure that things get run well, then, you know, why is it kind of looking like a stepchild with, as we speak, only three out of the five seats filled? Do we have any magic? Probably not, but we are, you know, well-known in the community that perhaps the residents would be more likely to pay attention to notices and things that are coming from Cupertino, as opposed to something, you know, a postcard coming from LAFCO, so...
So all we're doing here is accepting their, sorry, receiving the report. So what action do we need to receive the report? Do we need to vote to receive the report?
I don't know if you need to vote to receive the report, but to send it on to the Park and Rec Commission, and then to add it to their 2019-2020 work plan would be the motion.
So I do have a question that Jennifer asked earlier. What's our authority in this matter? Because this district right now is a special district of the county. So if, I guess, any outreach should be done, it should be the county doing it. And we are not really a governing body of this district. So what's our authority, or the Parks and Rec Commission's authority on this matter?
So at this point, we really don't have authority per se. LAFCO is a state agency. LAFCO came to us with the report and the options, and wants to know the city's response. In order to form that response, we should be asking the residents of the district, or at least in my opinion, that we should be going out and asking. I think the best venue to do that is through the Parks and Recreation Commission, to let the commission hold, conduct surveys, to hold a couple of public meetings. And that would be my recommendation within the next couple of months. I think that the commission can do that and come back to you.
So we are doing this as a service to our residents in Rancho, even though this is a matter that's really not within our jurisdiction?
You're also doing it at the request of another governmental body, LAFCO, which is a state commission.
So, and just to point out, there's, if, there's two different ways that the district can be... That would initiate the district, changing in the district's composition. So it can be initiated by LAFCO, or there can be a request by the city. And so I think that this is LAFCO saying, here's the different options for either continuing governance or changing governance of the district. And the city's going out to say, well, you know, is that something we want to pursue or not? And so what your Parks and Rec Director is recommending to get input on that. But there would be another step after we do this outreach process, which would be the city council deciding, are you going to ask LAFCO to initiate some change to the district boundaries? Or would the city itself request LAFCO to initiate those processes? So that would be a later decision the council would make after it's had this outreach.
And if I can even add to that, even after that process, then it would, still, LAFCO would be going back to the residents for confirmation. So there's many more steps.
Right, so this is, yeah, this is a good plan. Receive the report and let Parks and Rec do the polling, so...
And I'll move that we poll, and specifically, I think options one and two make a lot of sense. One is status quo, things stay the same. The other is this becomes a city facility, right? I think the other option where we're governing with council members from across the city that, you know, we're governing, but it's still a special district.
All right, so why don't you make a motion?
So I would move that we accept the staff recommendation, asking our Parks and Rec Commission staff to poll our 1,400 homeowners, the 1,400 homeowners, and yes, it could include the two or three I see from San Jose, and have a robust discussion with the community under the Parks and Rec Commission and see whether the residents could support option one, the status quo, or two.
And the recommendation was also to amend the work program.
Yes, and to amend their work program, of course.
Okay. Lights one out, okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Okay. Okay, next item, number 20. Project update report on bids and contract award for the McClellan Ranch Preserve Community Garden Improvement Project. Okay. Staff report.
Give me one moment to...
Roger.
Give me one moment to bring up the presentation, please. All right, good evening. Thank you for your patience. I'm Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Myself and Randy Schwartz will be giving you an update and also asking you to authorize the construction of the community gardens down at McClellan Ranch Preserve. This project is on the city's current work plan, and council last received an update and provided input on this project, October 15 of last year. Before I begin, I don't know if we still have in the audience. I do see Barbara Banfield, our city naturalist. She's in the audience, has quite a few years of working down at McClellan Preserve. We also had a couple of master gardeners. I don't know if Tom and Jim are still in the audience or not. Okay, good, we have a few there as well, so just resources to note that we have in the audience. And just to be clear, it is down at the McClellan Ranch Reserve. You can see on this slide. And you can also see some other locations in our approximate area where there are other community gardens. And the next slide shows specifically the community garden that had existed back in 1974. It included 59 plots at that time, and due in part to just inadequate improvements to the gardens, they fell into repair and incurred quite a few issues. The gardens were closed in October of 2018 and then were subsequently removed in April of last year. We've gone through several iterations on this project. I'm not going to spend much time on them at all, but this next slide shows initially how we had envisioned the gardens to be with a relatively limited budget at that time in September of 2018. And the idea was to really cover the entire 1.3 acres that had previously been community gardens with a configuration like this. We had several different plot sizes. The project went out to bid. We had a million-dollar budget at that time, and it came in about 60% over our budget. And council, you know, we rejected all bids at the time. And, and council, you know, we rejected all bids at the time and went back to the drawing board to come up with a more cost-efficient layout. This is the layout I mentioned. We'd come to council back in October of, of last year. And it better match the project and the available budget. We had one point, one point two million dollars was budgeted for this project. And you can see we went to a more homogeneous plot size throughout. We received a good, good input from council back in October and also solicited the same from the, the master gardeners and gardeners that utilize the site. And, and so this next slide will show how the most recent configuration looks. And then also how we, we separated the project out into what's called a base bid. And we had alternate bids and we had five of those. And I'll just briefly talk about what those, what those do. The, the base bid is what we consider to be what's just necessary and essential for us to have a functioning community garden. So the base bid would include like the perimeter fencing that goes around the entire site. And I don't know if you can see, see this. So the perimeter fencing is going all the way around. And I can get into details later if you care about, know about aperture size and all the things that we're doing to keep the critters out. We also have a, a site for the master gardeners over here, these five plots. That's included in, in the base bid. You can see the different storage sheds. There's, there's four of them around. That's part of the base bid. All the irrigation system, there'll be a hose bib at each of the hundred and, I think there's a hundred and twelve raised, a hundred and twelve gardens. Not all of them are raised. Six of them up here in this corner are at grade. But all, all these plots would have bibs to them. They'd be in four zones. We have, over here are the ADA accessible. There's, there's eight raised gardens there. They're just slightly higher than the other gardens. So those are things that are part of the base bid. Alternates that we're recommending is a shade structure that would be located here. There'd be some picnic, picnic table or two located under there. Also, that, that's bid alternate number three. Bid alternate number two is to separately fence in here, the master garden area. And so the bid schedule that, that you saw in the staff report, you'll see in another slide, it, it recommends that we do the base bid plus alternates one through three. What we're not recommending, and that's based on just the conversations we've had with the gardeners, is this alternate number four. And what that did is put the, the wire mesh or hardware cloth under the entire site. Instead, what'll happen is the raised planter beds, and even these that are in the ground here, will have the wire mesh affixed to the bottom of the planter beds. That'll just be part of it. So that's just a quick rundown of these different base bids and alternates. The, the next slide shows the, the bid results. So this is the number that you'll see in the staff report with our responsible low bidder. And on this next slide, I'll ask, I'll ask interim director Randy Schwartz to discuss the operations as he sees the, the community gardens going forward if, if council does approve them.
During the last council meeting, there was a large discussion on should the garden be open? Should it be closed? Should it be locked? Should it be open twenty-four seven? I've worked with other community gardens in several other cities. For security reasons, both city staff and the gardeners prefer if, if it is a locked facility. My recommendation here is to treat this the same as we do with almost all of the city assets, such as a library. It should be something that is locked and that has open hours to the public. The gardeners would be able to get in and do their work whenever they want and they would be able to have access. But we would also post open hours for the public to come in, to view, to tour, et cetera. For example, and this would be something that we would work out with the commission, and then come back and have the hours codified or posted in many places. But for the most part, I can see Saturdays and Sundays from ten o'clock until two o'clock, where the public can come in and they can, can see the, the locations. One or two weeknights, maybe from four o'clock until dusk, depending on the time of year and, and when the sun is setting, would be appropriate. We would have the, the garden open for tour groups to come in, whether it's schools, whether it's mothers' clubs, scout groups, preschools. Those have all come in in the past and, and those are visiting McClellan and we can make sure that they have sites, tours that are open at the garden. To supervise the gardens at those points, one of the requirements to have a garden out there would be that you would need to, to man the garden at certain times of the year. The Park and Rec staff would set up schedules for the ninety-six owners. And each time that the garden's going to be open, we would have at least three of the gardeners that are going to be on site to see what's going on out there. If there was any issues out there, over at McClellan, we also do have part-time staff. Almost all the times that the garden would be open, we do have the park rangers out there. So between the rangers, the part-time staff, the volunteers, the gardeners that are out there doing the work. We feel very confident that we can open the garden. It would still be safe, secure. The gardeners would love to give tours to show off what they've done out there. But I think it's a nice compromise to the, the situation that came at the last, the discussion that came in the last council meeting.
Thank you, Randy. The next slide talks about volunteers. So in October, when we discussed this with council, there was a, there was a, a strong recommendation to have, you know, gardeners and, and people really participate in, in making the improvements at the site. And so the reasons why we're not recommending the, the alternate number five, which was the construction of the raised beds, is that those ninety-three raised beds would be constructed by volunteers. So, so how it would be, the, the city would purchase the lumber, the, the, you know, the select top soil to fill the, the beds, the wire mesh to go at the bottom of the beds. We'd have some, some, some of our skilled staff from the service center would help, you know, cut these things up, sort of make them into like kits. And then we would, you know, have the, have the volunteers mobilize in an event or two and we'd just get to build a bunch of, of raised beds. And similarly, we would do like the, the mulch that would be distributed all around these beds. That too, you know, the city would purchase it and we'd have volunteers distribute all of that. So, you know, trying to, and, and also have talked with the gardeners to, to, to make sure that that's something that's doable. I mean, I've, I've not heard anything other than just interest to, to having everyone work together and get these things built. So that is what's anticipated here. This next slide just discusses what the process would be if, if council does authorize this evening. We, we had the bid opening back on January the twenty-first. We typically would award a contract within about thirty days. The bird nesting season, it started at the beginning of February. So before we would actually issue a notice to proceed, we'd have to make sure, what's the status of any nesting pairs that may be out at the site? If, if we do, we'd have to do some monitoring and see if we could, you know, practically mitigate that and still continue our construction if, if, if we are able to. You know, the project could be, could be started as early as, could be completed as early as June. But if we have to stay off of there until the end of the bird nesting season, which is the very end of August, it could conceivably push the project out until, you know, mid-December, you know, weather providing, you know, next rainy season. And that wraps up the presentation. And this is the recommendation that you saw in the staff report. So any questions?
Okay, first, let's go to public comment. I have two. Pamela Roper, followed by Jim Lai. Welcome, Pamela.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Jim Lai is not here, he's gone home. We actually had about five master gardeners here, but they, they.
I apologize.
I actually saw the plan that was going to be presented in the bid on Friday. And I wrote a detailed comment report back to, to the Public Works Department. We have been involved with McClellan since nineteen ninety-two. What I look at when I see this park is a wonderful opportunity for the community to come together and to do the things that we've done at other parks throughout Santa Clara County. Community gardens, I should say, not parks. Some of them are in city and county parks. A lot of them are in city-owned areas like St. Charles Street in Sunnyvale, Marshall Cottle Park in South San Jose. Both of them pretty much mirror similar-sized plots that you're trying to do here in, at McClellan Ranch. Our mission is to educate the public and to provide sustainable gardening advice that's researched and to look at pest management through researched projects that we get. We're taught by the University of California, we have to renew our education every year. So this is a wonderful opportunity for you to provide education to the public in sustainable gardening methods. Building those raised beds, we've done it. We've, we've built over ninety-two at St. Charles Street in Sunnyvale and Marshall Cottle Park, fifty-five plus and growing, have been built by community members. And it's an educational opportunity to show them, you can do this too. You can grow, whether you have a balcony, you can have container gardening, or you can do in-ground plots. We've done it with La Mesa Verde at the Sacred Heart Community Services. So we have a, a practice of doing that and I think you could be successful doing the same thing. More and more, this gets drawn out. I think you're losing a great audience of gardeners that have been wanting to get back into this since, since we had the first plan that we talked about back then. I talked to you back then. I didn't have gray hair then, I had brown hair. Now I'm gray, waiting. So I just strongly believe that you should support the Public Works Plan and approve it this evening as, as it's proposed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So since Jim is not here, we'll go straight to Jennifer Griffin. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council. I tried to stay out of other parts of the city. But since now the east side is going to become a very, very active partner with Park and Rec and with the commission, we need to get involved with a lot of things that are going on with Park and Rec. I have been very patient sitting through a lot of the meetings about McClellan Ranch Park and the gardens. I really, really commend them for doing this. My mother-in-law and my brother, brother-in-law in Corvallis use the community gardens in Corvallis on an ongoing basis. Large lots, lots and lots of active involvement from the public. Lot of the seniors use them. But I think that we need to remember that McClellan Ranch Park is a small confined area. You have competing needs. You have the people who are raising animals. You have the public coming in. I think it's important that the public be able to look at the gardens. We're sure able to do it in Corvallis. We go jogging through them or looking through them. There aren't a lot of fences around them. Now, maybe you need to do that to keep some of the varmints out, but I, yeah. I wish we had enough land on the east side to have community gardens, but we don't. Maybe we're going to have our cabana club taken apart and stripped down and have community gardens in it. Who knows? But I think that we need to realize that there are a lot of competing resources in McClellan Ranch Park. You have to have a finite area for the gardens. Maybe the plots need to be smaller. Believe me, there's a lot of people that only have enough land to grow maybe a two-by-two foot area. But any small, we have, our lots are so small in my neighborhood. One of the neighbors said that her husband has such a tiny section in his backyard that he has planted everything in it. And this is a close neighbor. And we're going to put ADUs in there on top of it. Oh, how fun. Anyway, I'm just saying, the east side is awake. We're alive and we are engaged with Park and Rec and with the commission. And I will start making comments about Monovista Side too. I have refrained, but I will, because we're a partner with Park and Rec. I don't want to lose my cabana club, but I want to make sure that there's equity across the city. Thank you.
So thank you, Jennifer. And I would point out, if the plans to acquire Lawrence Smithy come to fruition, I mean, one idea that's been floated is a community garden over there because it may not be a great area for a playground, but a community garden would be acceptable over there. So I would love to see them on each side of the city. And with that, bring it back. Anyone else have any comments on council? Sure, Rod.
So I was one of the proponents of keeping the gardens open and I understand there can be security concerns that, you know, don't want to just keep them open twenty-four seven. But I think some of the, I mean, I, I think we have to recognize that we are investing. It's still a lot of money, right? For relatively a few who have, would have the privilege to use these things. And I'd like to suggest that if we fund this tonight, that we ask Parks and Rec Commission to lay out certain program requirements that would go with this. And my vote on putting a lot of money in would be contingent on program requirements such as these. At a minimum, six hours on Saturdays, six hours on Sundays, another six hours during weekday afternoons, so school classes could come, or early evenings in the spring, summer, and fall, maybe not the winter, right? Something reasonable. Putting door locks on a, on a timer, so the doors would open to the public during posted hours that we would have. But we would also, if, if we think that, you know, if we're concerned about the security of this, I would have issue individual cards or key fobs so that our volunteers that we expect are monitoring this on a schedule actually show up. And I'd like to track that, right? To make sure that everybody knows that, yeah, we, we are expecting people to show up. I would expect that the volunteers would have this monitoring as, services as you have suggested, as part of what they're contributing to the community, that they'd keep the, their plot in productive use, right? Before we took it all apart, there were a lot of gardens that just were fallow year after year, weeds and other things. So I would expect, we, we don't want to have weed abatement hearings on these plots. I know, it's a sore subject. And I expect that there's some fee, right? That somebody would pay annually. And I would say that we ought to give preference, not simply to those who had a plot when we last had a garden, but we would give preference to those who are willing to put sweat equity into, to building this thing. And say, look, you know, if, if you fulfill our expectations, you can continue doing this. But I do think from, from an equity standpoint, an access standpoint, you know, those folks who, we're probably going to have a, a substantial waiting list. And I would think it would be responsible for us to say, hey, you know, if you can't do the volunteer monitoring, you can't put this thing to productive use, that, that we, we would, we would, you would surrender the right, automatic right to re-renew. We'd put you at the bottom of the list and take somebody else perhaps. I think that would be a fair way to ensure that people didn't have to wait on the waiting list perpetually. So this isn't an entitlement. It's, what we're doing is we're investing in these gardens and in exchange, we're also asking you as a plot holder to, to help us. Because as, as has been said here, a lot of the value here is, is for people to understand what they can plant and what the plants look like and what are appropriate seasons and enjoy the beauty of all of this. And I think the, the pity for me would be if we, yeah, we closed it up and the hours were so restrictive that, you know, our school kids didn't have the benefit of really going inside and, and getting up close to, to the, the plants and maybe having an opportunity to participate with some of the master gardeners and, and others, right? Residents who are just growing their eggplants and spring onions or whatever. So I'm, I'm, I'm appreciative that staff has refined this and refined this and brought the price down again and again. And my only thing is, I think, given the, the large investment we're making in, for these, I think we ought to insist on program requirements such as these. But I'd let the Parks and Rec Commission come back with specific recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, council member Chow.
So, yeah, thank you for.
So, yeah, thank you for great job done. So the cost has been reduced from 1.5 million to 1.2 million, and now 0.65 million. That's a huge reduction. Thank you for all the good work. And I really liked your plan of asking the gardeners to have, to commit volunteer hours to keep the garden open for the public to see. So there is a commitment, so they get the entitlement of access to the garden, but then they are required to commit volunteer hours. That's great. So you mentioned that the volunteer hours you have in mind was Saturday. Could you repeat the hours and the weekday that you have in mind so far?
Well, that was just as an example.
Yeah.
And we would be taking it to the Park and Rec Commission and giving a recommendation, having a recommendation from them.
Yeah. It's pretty much in line with what Rod was suggesting, I think.
What I threw out was 10 to 2, just as a number. Councilmember Singh said 9 to 3, essentially, six hours a day instead of four hours a day. But again, it would be something that we would take to the Commission, and they would be making a recommendation on that. But it should include both weekend and night hours, as well as weekday for the school groups and the scout groups and the kids that are gonna come visit. I just want to also add, because you made me think of one, that I built a community garden once next to a preschool that we developed. The kids planted, and they took the food, and that was their snacks later on. They made pizzas with all of the vegetables and things, and it was a great learning experience. So even small plots are invaluable to teach, to teach our kids what gardening's all about.
Yeah, so, and you also mentioned that your current plan is to have maybe three gardeners sign up for each slot. And so at least one would actually be present, and you would be tracking their attendance, right?
Correct.
So that means there probably will be an agreement that they sign. If they do not follow the agreement, what will be the consequences? So that's something that the Parks and Rec Commission would work out.
We will let them work on the details, but the bottom line is, I'm sure we would be looking at a warning system, and then at some point, they would no longer be able to have the plot. We would turn it over to the next person on the waiting list, if there was a waiting list.
Great. So currently, is there a time limit that one can hold the lot and renew it for however long? How does that work?
I believe you can hold on to it as long as you can. Yeah, you're not gonna look at me, are you? Yeah, Jenny. Is there a renewal, a time when it turns over, or does a, did a plot holder used to be able to keep a plot forever at that point?
It used to be forever. It's gonna be for years, I believe.
Okay. Staff has already started putting together a sheet with, I'm gonna do it this way. I don't have copies. This is a pure draft. Maybe the table of contents would show. But when somebody gets a plot, yes, there would be a formal agreement that they have, and it would list all of the criteria to have the plot, the responsibilities of the plot owner, as well as the fees yet to be determined. All of these things, that's what staff's been working on.
So maybe a limit on the number of years, in case there is a waitlist.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
And I'm assuming that this should be by household, so that it can be, husband holds three years, wife holds three years, son holds three years. That is almost like forever.
As well as the husband holding one plot, the wife holding a second plot, the child holding a third plot.
That's true.
And doing it that way. Right? No, we understand. As much community participation as possible.
The item before us now isn't developing these, but to approve the contracts.
Okay. So a question about, I think we are covering about two-thirds of the original site that was planned for the community garden. At that time, it was because we reduced the budget from 1.5 million to 1.2 million dollars. But now, you have found a way to reduce the cost further. So, but then, the current plan is still only two-thirds of the entire site. I'm just wondering, how come you did not just use 100% of the site?
Well, that's a good question. That's the hard cost to do the improvements on, we'll just call it the Phase 1. It's about 60% of the site. By the time you add various soft costs, it gets us really close to the amount, we have about $900,000 available for construction and soft costs right now, after you back out the design and all the things that happened. So, you know, if we proceed with this award, I expect to have, and we don't have any unforeseen things occur, I expect to have some balance of dollars left over, but it's not gonna be, it would not be enough to go ahead and go into that remaining 40%.
So the total cost would still be pretty close to 1.2 million dollars?
Yes. Yeah, I think we're tracking to come in a little bit lower, as long as there's no unforeseen things, but not much.
And then there is a separate effort to, for the satellite community garden that's on separate parks, which I think Jennifer was probably thinking about, right?
That's correct. That's a separate project, separate funding.
Okay. No, I don't have much, but I liked your idea about the pizza. Because when my daughter did AmeriCorps, they had all the garden boxes, which I helped build, not too difficult. They grew all the vegetables, they made the pizza, put the vegetables on, the kids picked all the vegetables off and threw them away, and then ate the cheese pizza. They asked for pepperoni, not realizing where it came from. Hopefully, we're not gonna be raising pigs over there, too. Anyway, that's all I have. I think it's a great program. I'm so appreciative that the price came down to something more reasonable. And in the future, maybe we'll come up with the money to do the rest of the land.
I don't have comments. I'll bring the motion after Councilmember Willie's comments.
So, I'm very impressed. I mean, yes, there's a lot of identically sized ones, so a little bit less creative, but I think that goes a long way in making it accessible to more gardeners. So I think that's an important trade-off. So then, the one that I would toss out is, again, back to schools. I'd sure like to hear that there's a significant outreach to the schools to get them to participate in whatever way they can, whether, you know, just coming and having times to be there, or to maybe work with individual master gardeners, so that a master gardener kind of adopts a class. And they come out when it's just dirt and being prepared, and then they come back six weeks later, and they see the little sprouts, and then they come back later and they see the beginnings of the fruits. And so I'd really like to hear that there's a strong outreach to the schools to let them know that they can participate. They won't just be weekend visitors walking through, but they actually got to work with the gardeners. And if you can add that into the overall concept, I'm thinking that the schools would really enjoy that.
Yeah, we feel very confident in that. Right now, we've got, I believe it's close to 2,000 students per year that are coming toward McClellan. So we think that having the garden, and I do appreciate the idea of having the master gardeners available when the students are out there, to really teach them what's going on. Thank you.
Having received their project update and report of bids, I motion that the Cupertino City Council want authorize the Director of Public Works to award a construction contract to Grade Tech Incorporated, the apparent low bidder, for the base bid and additive alternates, alternates 1 through 3, in the total amount of $649,300. And 2, authorize a 10% contingency budget of $64,930 to address unforeseen conditions during construction. And 3, authorize up to $10,000 for the purchase of one 16-cubic yard enclosed roll-off container for green waste and manure disposal. And 4, that the Director of Public Works work with the Parks and Recreation Commission to conduct outreach regarding programmatic elements suggested by the City Council members tonight.
Did you vote on all four that were listed by Speaker Fall?
Yes, that's all four of them. The first one was receiving the project bids, so that was the preface to.
Okay. That got me off of the number. Thank you very much.
And I added one with regard to the Commission.
And I appreciate that.
Sure.
The motion carries unanimously.
Yay.
Mayor, I have to go run a meeting in San Francisco early tomorrow, so if you might, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to excuse myself.
Can't you just go straight to that meeting from this meeting?
My mind is a bit mush right now, so.
Okay.
And I'm sure you can get the last couple items here.
Right, okay.
I'm confident of it.
Next is, Council of Goals, adopt, adopt of, F, okay.
A little typo there.
Adopt fiscal year 2020 to 21, Council of Goals.
I guess this should be adoption of.
Right. Staff's, staff report.
Deborah Fang, City Manager. As we discussed last Monday, on February 10th, not last Monday, yes, February 10th, we discussed the 1920 work program, and we started to establish the Council Goals for 2021, the coming fiscal year. As promised, we are on the second box of the flow diagram during our regular council meetings to adopt the identified goals from the previous meeting. As a reminder, the City Council Goals are overarching goals to help guide your efforts in policy setting, and probably should not change year to year unless we do some gigantic things towards some of these really ambitious efforts that you've identified through the goals. Next. In no particular order, you identified approximately five: public engagement, sustainability, housing, transportation, and quality of life. And then, staff and I established more of a guiding objective statement. So for example, public engagement, transparency, creating and maintaining key conversations, interactions with the Cupertino community. I will not read all of these to you, but just to point out in the next couple of ones, Council did make some adjustments to some of them, and I'll point them out. Next. I think this one stayed the same. Affordable housing. We split out, instead of just calling it affordable, we split out and called out the specific income levels that we're looking for and addressing homelessness specifically. Transportation, you had a couple of additions. I wanted you to confirm that those changes got met with equitable mass transit in the And then, quality of life, because that's probably gonna be the largest kind of goal in terms of content and the work program, you established three sub-bullets: air quality, public safety, and recreation. However, if on next Monday, special session, the staff will be recommending a work program for 2021, that's a compilation of staff and Commission work, and some input from Council over the last several months. If there are obvious other themes underneath the subheading, we'll add it at that time. And that's it.
Okay. I have one speaker card, Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council. I was there last Monday when you all were working on the item that we're discussing. And I'm gonna start out with, you just said, public engagement and transparency. We had, it's no fault of yours or the staff, we are living in unbearable times because of Sacramento and some very, very bad senators. Therefore, the rest of the city, as every city in California, will live the repercussions of having every institution in their city smashed to pieces. And that is what is happening with the zoning. So I think that we need to be very, very cognizant of what this disruption is doing to our city, and we need to let our public officials know. And I intend to let that be the focus of the time that I spend in the city and my interactions with my City Council, my Planning Commission, and my upper-ups. When I vote in March, I'm voting based on the CASA. I'm voting based on SB 50, SB 35. I will not vote for anyone attached to CASA. I'm wiser, because I have read about it, I have been involved in city things. A lot of people are not aware of the travesties that are being pushed upon the residents of this state. But we need to make sure that we understand that just because someone signed a law, they need to make sure that the residents understand, we have a voice, we live in a democracy. I don't live in a communist totalitarian. I have the right to say, this is wrong. And therefore, we need, one of my goals, and I hope that it is yours, too, is to retain local control at the city and county level. I don't know whether you, what you can do with that, but that's what I'm going on. There has been a seizure of local control. The other thing is, that you talked about quality of life. These housing bills are deteriorating the quality of life in Cupertino. So when you have air quality, public safety, recreation, safety, peace of mind in your city, that is a goal, and I'm going to work on it. I hope you are, too. But we need to let the neighbors know. And I will, I have, I have every right to ask for a set of plans. I can go to the county, because they have sets of plans of every house in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Bring it back to Council. Councilmember Chow.
So, under the public engagement and transparency, the bullet there, it seems it only addressed public engagement, not transparency. I wish that we have, I don't know, should we have a separate item, I mean, separate bullet under that addressed transparency? For example, website with sufficient information for upcoming projects. And for example, also sufficient notification for residents.
Respectfully, Councilmember, those be under interaction. So for example, you will see some of the work program items that come forward underneath this particular goal, and would be able to see how we provide a window into like a project status, or some other information on the website, where people who are interested can go and see exactly where a project is.
Okay. Yeah, because right now, I think some of our development project, the information on the website doesn't really list some very important information that people really wants to know. So we need to work on better presentation of the information also. Okay. And under housing, I think affordable housing, that's this term usually also includes moderate income and.
It includes extremely low, all the way through moderate. When you say affordable housing, those are the Reno levels they talk about. But I believe that Council, we may have missed this, I believe that Council changed the heading to be, the goal to be housing, and then underneath the objective stays the same. Does that, does that sound right? I think that's true.
So do you mean low-income housing, moderate-income level housing? Because affordable housing here sounds strange. It should be including low-income housing, moderate-income housing, and addressing homelessness, right? Affordable could mean many different things.
Not in this context. In this context, it grows directly.
Not in this context. In this context, it grows directly to the afford, the use of the word affordable in the definition. We can list them, or we, and we can take the affordable one out, or we can.
Because if we have affordable and then we have moderate income, that's odd.
We can list them all.
I don't know if you need to list them all, but it does seem if you're, you could just say affordable, you don't have to say moderate, because moderate falls under affordable as well.
No, it doesn't actually, moderate.
It doesn't, is it?
Because the affordability levels under RENA are low, very low.
There's no moderate?
And moderate.
Below moderate, isn't it?
No, it's to moderate.
There's moderate.
It's extremely low, low.
No, extremely low is not actually technical.
Yeah, yeah, RENA doesn't do ELI.
RENA doesn't do ELI.
It includes moderate.
It's low, very low.
Maybe.
Below moderate and moderate, is that right?
Okay, here we have the expert.
How about we say affordable housing, comma, including from extremely low-income housing to moderate-income housing? So that it describes the affordable housing.
What we're talking about, right? That's fine.
I mean, I would, I don't know, I would just say affordable and get rid of moderate, because moderate falls under.
That's true.
Affordable in RENA. Why are we adding so many words?
I think it was Rod's amendment, he would like to emphasize, we would include moderate income for the teachers.
Ah, okay.
So, but then, now it's odd, maybe we can just clarify, affordable means extremely low income to moderate income, because also I think on the extremely low income is not included in the RENA requirement. So that's just include both things, so from here to there.
Okay.
Yeah, change that.
Yeah, I can see that.
Extremely low, low.
Yeah.
Just go extremely low to moderate.
Well, including affordable housing, open a parenthetical, right, from extremely low income to moderate income level housing, close the parenthetical, and then the rest stays the same, and addressing homelessness, so.
Copy.
Yeah, because that, that actually includes ELI, which is.
Yeah, which is our focus.
Okay.
Okay, and under quality of life, in addition to air quality, I think we are concerned about noise also, right?
Yeah.
I didn't mention.
Yeah, I, I noticed that too, that noise was missing.
Yeah, I did not mention that last time.
We are concerned about noise, but what, what work program would you propose that would address noise pollution?
It would be part of smart city monitoring aircraft noise, monitoring other noise.
Sensors, yeah, sensors.
Without getting too specific, just, just add noise. We don't have to say.
We can add noise.
How we're going to do it right here in this list.
I think there was also other concern, some people about housing that's right next to highway, we can require better windows for housing that's within certain feet of highway.
Right, well, that wouldn't be in the goals, but.
That would be just work, future work program item, right?
Right.
Yeah, we'll be discussing.
So air quality and noise.
Yep, we'll add, add noise.
And then recreation, I think we need to include parks.
Parks is how you recreate, so it's not really an objective or goal, it's how you recreate.
That's part of quality of life. So we have parks and recreation, so why not we just?
I ask, I ask respectfully that the council allow me to help establish goals and then watch the process next Monday.
Yeah, yeah, I'm willing to say that recreation does include, it includes parks, it's not limited to parks. I think there's an advantage to being slightly vague here, because it's just a goal, right, it's just a goal, and we'll address all of this in the work plan.
Yep.
Okay, and then one additional item, I think this is the contention for the past several years, is access to services for daily needs, for, for example, retail shops, medical facilities. These are essential quality of life issues that we are losing slowly in Cupertino.
So that might come under economic development, so there'll be work program items that might slide right underneath this goal in the economic development area.
But then that, that issue has been left out, tend to be left out, economic development hasn't been real focus, access for residents. So that's why I would like this to be one item under quality of life, because that's really quality of life. Otherwise, we'll have to drive out of town to.
So access to services?
Sir, I think access to services for daily needs, such as retail shops, medical facilities.
Okay, I'll, we'll put that in.
Et cetera.
Maybe just access to goods.
Access to services.
Access to goods and services.
Goods and services, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, make that a fourth bullet point there, well, fifth, because you're adding noise.
No, noise and air quality.
Oh, noise is, is part of air quality? Oh, air quality and noise, okay, so then a fourth bullet is access to goods and services. Okay. Darcy, John?
I have nothing yet, but I support the additions that have been made so far.
So the one I think kind of got dropped off, because I had brought it up, under transportation, you know, I want to, I realize this is at the high level, but I mean, we haven't even touched on it, but improving the local traffic flow slash addressing the congestion.
Yeah, that's, we'll address it, but you need to take a look at the work program items.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it's not even got one word in this here, this is all, it is transportation, and so I do believe it, it belongs here as an important thing. All 64,000 residents suffer the, the problems of congestion, and yet all we're saying is provide access.
Can we say another bullet point being improving traffic flow and alleviating congestion?
I just think the more, I'm not opposed, but it's just going to get too much, you're getting too weedy, and I'm really trying to get you to establish goals right at the right level.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean.
Doesn't multimodal include private vehicles?
Efficient and safe multimodal vehicles, right, it's, it's all the vehicles, it's the entire vehicle system.
I support John, because I think I raised this concern last time also, because regionally, whenever people say multimodal, yes, it does include a vehicle, but usually vehicle is at the bottom, and then all the other modes gets priority. But what actually affect our residents is flow of traffic.
So can I ask that council trust the work program process on Monday, next Monday?
Sure.
And if it's not on there, then call me out on it.
No, I, I think, I think, I think we will certainly trust your process, and I think you've done a great job, but we also have three people asking for another bullet under transportation.
But the work program item's coming on Monday. I'm sure you'll, you'll see it.
My concern is this is a council goals that will carry to next year and the year after, and what we are saying here might be dropped. It might be being this year's work program, next year it might not be there, because it's not mentioned.
And they are your goals, so you can add it if you want, but the more weedy you get, the more confined you'll be in the future, so.
Why is it confined? We are just adding one extra.
It's just in the future, if you back out five years, seven years, things start to shift around, you may end up truly addressing some of these very large things, and they have, it, goals are not meant to be so specific that they have to kind of change from year to year.
Well, but the council in four years is not going to be bound by our goals, I mean, you know, I presume that it'll be revisiting, so anyway, I mean, that's.
So what was, you said there were three, what was yours, so what?
So under traffic, I'm sorry, under transportation, just adding the bullet point, improving traffic flow and alleviating congestion, so that would be the final addition. Councilmember Woldy, do you have any others?
Nope, that's it.
So I'd like to move that we approve.
Just add that, that's fine.
The fiscal year 2020, 2021 council goals, as amended by councilmembers Chow and Willie.
Great. Second vote. Oh, Rod's absent, okay.
Motion carries with Sinks absent.
Oh, well, he was gone, we could have ta, oh, never mind, okay. Item 22. Okay, amendment to council assignments to appoint one primary member and one alternate member to the County of Santa Clara Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee. The reason we didn't do this earlier is because either this didn't exist, or we were not invited to participate, but now we are. So I, I am willing to be the primary member, but I'm happy to give it to anyone else that wants to do it. And Vice Mayor could be the alternate member, if he's amenable to that.
Thank you for doing it. Do we know if this exists before, or is this a new thing?
I think it did exist, but it probably moves, there's probably not enough seats for every city to have a seat at the table, so they kind of, maybe they just rotate it. I had never heard of it before.
Interesting.
So how often do they meet?
I think it's, is it once a quarter?
Yeah, it says quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly.
Good.
So.
Are there any public comments on this?
Nope.
No, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'd like to move the recommended action by staff.
Second?
Can I vote no? Okay.
Motion carries with Sinks absent.
Good morning, everybody. We are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Staff?
I attended the City Managers Conference in Napa a week and a half ago. Lots of good modules, including an interesting concept that Los Angeles used, or 13 cities in Los Angeles used for starting to address their homeless problem regionally versus city by city, which I will share as soon as I get a moment to do that. Also, some interesting information on housing in general and kind of some of the laws and its effect, the effects kind of together in a way. And then, of course, I attended the Santa Clara County City Managers Association meeting that's monthly. That's it.
Was there wine appreciation as part of that?
I did not wine appreciate.
Okay, great. Okay, city attorney, do you have anything?
Nothing from me.
Okay, great. Councilmember Chow?
Okay, so I attended a Science Olympia Invitational hosted by Kennedy Middle School, and they have teams from multiple states, and 30 or 40 teams from different areas. A lot of energy, it was really fun to give out awards. Really miss the kids. So on the 14th, we have our coffee talk, and I think next month we would have our last coffee talk, and then we will figure out what to do next, maybe lunch, maybe in different format, we are still figuring that out. So we had about 25 attendees. Topics covered are cell towers, pounding the Memorial Park, wondering what, when are we going to put something in, bike paths near Westport project, because there was a proposal to have bike paths along to, along 85 on Westport, but that, now that's gone, so the, Larry Dean was wondering about what happened to that. And then there were comments about McClellan Bike Path, and people want better right, no right turn signs on Stelling and McClellan, and tree protection ordinance. Some people are concerned material trees are replaced in development projects. And Lehigh expansion issue subsidized, someone requesting subsidized the right to library. I called her up to inform her about the Via Shuttle, she was happy with that. And there's someone is developing a new software for community engagement that might be similar to Nextdoor, I don't know, it seems she is talking with Bill about that. And another person who lives on Stelling is concerned about VTA bus being canceled there, and he would like to know whether there is any long-term plan to connect Cupertino to mass transit terminals. So so many issues covered in our. Then I attended the State of the Valley event, and it was, I think not, well, yeah, so there, there were speeches.
Okay.
Okay, so for future agenda item, do I do that now?
Sure.
So I hope that, can we schedule an item about the new formula for RENA allocation? What exactly there are, can we have certain input on that, because?
Well, the city's association has one person that attends that meeting, but they have not published what, I mean, they're still working on what, how they're going to do the formula. All they're saying, it's going to be, it's going to be huge numbers based on what LA got.
I know, I mean, they have been meeting, they have a work group meeting on this. So I'm wondering what's the process, is there any time that the city can provide input? I think our job housing number is actually not good right now, because vocal SB 35 is an approved project, so we have this, that, 2 million square feet of office extra that's approved.
Right, but, but they're not looking, I mean, they're looking at actual jobs and housing when they do it, they're not looking at what might come if a project is actually built.
They are also looking at projections, right?
No, that, I don't think they look at that, because it's not, I mean.
That's good to know, because I would like to know.
I mean, they could look at what might be coming, but it's not here yet, right? So all they really have to go on is the state, I mean, there's numbers of how many jobs and how many housing units.
So, okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's move on.
So, so I'm wondering, can we have more information on what formula they are likely to use?
Right, as soon as we know, we can have an agenda item.
Could we provide input on that, and we don't want to miss the window to provide input. And another item, I think I emailed the city attorney about, is there is a lawsuit against FPCC about the small cell tower issue.
The FCC, not the FPPC.
FCC, yeah. So I'm wondering, it might be too late to join the lawsuit, because we should have done it last year, but in, I wonder, we should keep an eye whether we can.
Yeah, and we have, as I mentioned in our email, we're, we're tracking that, and we'll report out once the decision's issued by the Ninth Circuit.
Okay, and I think John requested a study session on small cell issue. Yes, we did have a study session last year, but the study session was only about what administrative things the city has for small cell. And what I would like to study is what other cities have adopted in ordinances. In fact, I found also there were sample ordinances by certain organization about small cell.
Okay, so you and John want to put that on the agenda?
True.
Okay, so that's two people, so we can put that on the agenda.
And it's different from the last study session.
Right, and it's fine, I mean, we can do with other cities, we can look at other cities, and we also will want input on whether what they did is legal or not.
I think part might be risky, but some part might be not, so we need to study that.
Yeah.
And.
So are you done?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I attended the State of the Valley as well last Friday. As Councilmember Chow said, there were speeches. Some of them were useful and accurate, and some were not. I thought Dan Rather's speech was excellent. I hope that when I'm 88, I can speak as well as he did. That's, yeah, that's really all I have. Darcy? That's, yeah, that's really all I have. Darcy.
So on the sixth of February, Councilmember Chow and I met with a couple of representatives from Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I thought it was a productive meeting. It was just a coffee. And we talked about, you know, various issues affecting what they're doing, including transit. But I think it was good to, you know, kind of keep the relationship, you know, revived and moving forward. They're a significant presence in our, in our area, so I think it's good to keep those in our relations going. On the thirteenth, with the Assistant City Manager Diane Thompson, I had lunch with Nancy Howe in Campbell. Nancy's our outgoing county librarian for the Joint Powers Authority. We thanked her for service to the library as well as to the city of Cupertino. We'd like her to come in to receive proclamation at some point, so that would be.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah, and just for your and the community's information, one of the admin staff of the county library system, Jennifer Weeks, has been designated the interim county librarian, so that's been made an official announcement as of today. Also, later that day on thirteenth, we had a library working group meeting. That was our first update in the new year. It's going very well. Various contracts have been put out to bid. A couple of members of the working group, including a member from the Library Foundation and a member from the Library Commission, are going to be on an interview panel later today, being Wednesday, to help determine which of the two bidders for bridging architect will be chosen. And so that, that project goes forward very well. I'd like to thank Diane as well as Roger Lee and Michael Zimmerman from our staff for their very excellent efforts there. On the thirteenth of February, I think you mayor were at a different event, and I saw Councilmember Stinks come in later, but there was an annual town hall style meeting held in this room by Supervisor Joe Simidian. And he brought in all the regulatory agencies that oversee Lehigh. There were a lot of them. So probably a good fourteen people representing everyone from BACMed, the Air Quality Management District, to the Environmental Protection Agency, and of course, the county, which governs the oversight in a direct manner over Lehigh's emissions. I also attended the past State of the Valley for a part of it. I agree with what my colleagues have said, and I'll just put kind of a positive note on it. I think that organization really, joint venture Silicon Valley, does a good job of producing data with regard to the valley every year. And they come out with an excellent guide. I think we should probably keep a copy of it, frankly, at City Hall, so if anyone has an extra copy, I would encourage. In fact, I can, I can provide my copy. I stayed long enough to listen.
It's all online.
End of the CEOs. Oh, is it? Okay, okay, excellent. So joint venture Silicon Valley's data, a lot of good raw data on Silicon Valley is available online on their website. So I listened to the end of their CEO or president's speech, and I agree. I guess it's very, very focused in particular ways. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, it would be great to see the various jurisdictions in the valley get together and host some kind of State of the Valley, you know, from a governmental perspective. I think that would really be a nice boon for reflecting the publicly selected sentiment as to the priorities of the valley. But that's just a thought. Thanks very much.
And last but not least.
Okay, on the seventh was the Chinese New Year luncheon put on by Chamber of Commerce. And then on the thirteenth, I also attended the Lehigh Town Hall put on by Joe Simidian. The comment that I would like to put out is, you know, we, we really are impacted a lot. The residents truly let us know how much they're being impacted by the Lehigh operations. And it really is pretty evident that we really don't have much that we can do. But I think we really can step up the monitoring and, and making sure that every instance that they're exceeding the pollution requirements, they're, anything and everything that's impacting our residents are very clear and, and brought up. And then hopefully work toward penalties that will stop them from just taking it as a cost of doing business. And so I would hope at some point we can have maybe a work program or a study session, maybe a work program about putting in some effort to stepping up the monitoring that we will be doing to stay on top of this. So then, on to future agenda items. The first one I would simply like to bring up, you know, for the Deanza Hotel, there was a very sizable challenge to the EIR that the city attorney is reviewing. I would also like that to go and get looked at by the Planning Commission, such that when it comes to us, I'd like to know what their thoughts were about all the challenges that were brought up. So that's one that I'd like to request. Hopefully, somebody else will agree.
What, I don't quite understand the challenge about.
So, you know, there was the group that put in, I want to say it was a three-hundred-page challenge to the EIR. And the city attorney is, yeah, for the Deanza slash Goodyear Hotel. And the city attorney is reviewing that, but I'd really like to know what the Planning Commission feels. They're the more appropriate body to go through it from the issues that may or may not be significant for the community. And have them look at it in parallel so that when it does come back to us, you know, we had due diligence by the Planning Commission.
Don't, doesn't that already go through planning?
No, it was submitted the day that it came to us.
Right, that's why it was pulled from the agenda because this kind of thing happens often. Somebody, well.
Oh, by the labor group.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should let the city attorney determine if it has any validity before we burden the Planning Commission with more.
That'll delay things afterwards then because then what do we say? Okay, now we look at it and the Planning Commission didn't have a chance to review it themselves and give us their comments.
So we will get some, we will get opinion from the city attorney first, right? So why do we need to go through planning?
Well, do it in parallel. I mean, like I say, I'd like to make sure that anything that's going to impact the residents, you know, gets looked at in that regard, not just in a legal.
Okay, so it's not a city agenda item, it's just have the planning.
I don't know, I don't know if we can put things on, on the Planning Commission's agenda.
I'd have to look at sort of timelines and processing requirements of, you know, sending it. As far as this has already been through the Planning Commission, the normal process is after it goes to the Planning Commission, it comes to the city council, and the council might be able to refer it back. That seems like it would normally be done when, when the council's considering the whole item, if decides it needs to send something back to the Planning Commission, I think would be probably the more normal process. I also have a little bit of concern about setting a precedent of sending comments, EIRs back to the Planning Commission when we get comment letters because under streamlining laws now, if this happened for a housing project, you're limited to the number of hearings that you can have. And so if this was to happen on a housing project, you know, you might not be able to send it back, or if you send it back, then you'd be limiting the number of hearings the council could have on it. You wouldn't be able to continue the hearing, for instance. So you're taking away some of council's discretion. You know, my recommendation would be to have the, you know, both the city's attorney's office and your environmental consultants prepare response to the comments, bring that to the council, and then if there's a reason to send it back after you have the whole item before you consider it then.
So, and I believe it's on the next agenda, I think.
That's why I'm actually bringing it up because.
It's a March card, right?
To do it, to do it in parallel, if the Planning Commission, you know, breezes through it and have no issue, I mean, that's a strong indicator for us. If, if they haven't seen it and then we go and send it back to them, then it delays things that much longer. I mean, I think just ask the, if nothing else, ask the Planning Commission Chair to, here's a, here's a three-hundred-page document.
Well, let's, so right now, we're just deciding whether we put something on the agenda to send this back, which at this point would be the next meeting, which is where the items coming before you. So I'm not sure there's much of a difference at this point.
Can the Planning Commission Chair decide, initiate on their own that they would like to look at this comment letter and consider that again, right? They can do that without our direction, right?
I guess they can. I would doubt they would be interested since they've already gone through the whole EIR.
Then, yeah, it's there.
And they know.
If they want to, it's their choice.
And we all know why these letters are being sent. I mean, why these challenges are coming.
So, right, they could decide that, to add an item, the Planning Commission could decide to add an item to look at the, at the letter.
Actually, I want to propose an agenda item that I forgot, sorry. But it was on top of what John.
Wait, hold on, John, John, okay. Were you done, John, or did you have something else?
So I had one more, specifically, you know, having kind of gone through this now with one of the other projects, I would like a study session on the state density bonus law and both us being able to understand and interpret it and then discerning what our city policy should be with regards to handling it.
Yeah, and we are planning, my office is planning to hold a study session on state density bonus law, Housing Accountability Act, and the recent amendments made there to those laws in the most recent housing cycle. So SB three-thirty would be included at that, and it would be, we're planning to bring it to the Planning Commission in March next month, with city council members would be invited as well.
Right, yeah, I think we'd all benefit from that because I know I don't understand the whole thing.
Is that a joint meeting? Are we doing a joint meeting?
We could do it a joint, or it could just be a public meeting that.
We attend.
That the city council members can attend.
Maybe it's more effective as a joint meeting. That way, the attorney only needs to present once. Everyone can ask questions, right?
When is that gonna be?
I think it's, when are the, probably the second meeting in March for the Planning Commission or the first, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, whatever, okay.
Okay, so one more item that's actually John requested, that's review the GPA authorization procedure. When it was adopted in two thousand fifteen, it was after that council had a consultant research, did a study of the community benefits practices done by five or six other cities. And the very end, the council decided, oh, it's too complicated to specifically specify how much extra people can get from this much benefit. And then the result was this GPA authorization procedure, which is just ask, we'll figure it out. So maybe we, but then, as it turns out, some people ask more, give less. Some people didn't ask a lot, but then they give us a lot more. So it's not really fair right now, like the Tucan Hotel project. One didn't really ask for any amendment. They are, they just need extra hotel rooms. But then they actually gave the city more donation dollars per room, but the other one, so.
So is that an agenda item or you?
I think it's a future work program item to revisit on.
Okay.
The GPA authorization procedure.
Okay.
Support that.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it?
Thank you very much, and, yeah.
Okay, anything else? And what time did you predict this meeting would end?
This is, this is earlier than I.
I was incorrect.